Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
It is my pleasure to call to order the October 4th, 2008 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Redneck. Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the requests. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance the individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. We will now move on to public statements. This is a time reserved for anyone wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the Consent Calendar Public Hearings portion of the agenda. If you are here on items 5A through 5F, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? If so, please come forward and state your name.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Eduardo Morales, and I live in 5302 Sugar Pine Drive, which is just on the other side of the wall that this project is developed at.
If you're here for one of the items on the consent calendar, we'll get to those items. This is for general comments from the public.
Oh, general comments?
Yes.
All right, then, away.
Coming up to you soon. Thank you. Seeing no one wishing to address the commission on a general item, we will move on to Consent Calendar Non-Public-Hearing Items. These typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public-Hearing Item for separate Seeing no one, if I may, I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on Consent Calendar Non-Public-Hearing Item 4A.
I'll make a motion to approve Item 4A.
Commissioner Coleman, may I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Wade, thank you.
Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade. Yes.
And Commissioner Redneck.
Moving on to Item 5, Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. The next Agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The Planning Director will first read each of the items on the consent calendar to make sure that the public has an understanding of all items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a commissioner, the commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Mr. Coyle, will you please read Item 5A through 5F on tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. There are six projects before you this evening. Project 5A is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6148. It's a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 361 lots for single-family residential development, one park lot, and three open-space lots on 219 acres located on the east side of Alfred Harrell Highway, south of the Kern River Golf Course. Project 5B is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6521, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 425 lots on 110.6 acres for single-family residential development located on the southeast corner of Cottonwood Road and Casa Loma Drive. Project 5C is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6578, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 261 lots for single-family residential development, one park site lot, two drill islands, and one well site on 79.54 acres located on the southeast corner of future South Allen Road and Pensinger Road. Project 5D is an extension of time for vesting tentative parcel map 10606, which is a proposal to approve three more years to develop this project, which consists of 113 parcels and one drill site on 51.3 acres for industrial development purposes located along Woodmere Drive between Ash Road and Stein Road. Project 5E is a second revised vesting tentative tract map 6283 for condominium purposes. This project is a proposal to subdivide 16.14 acres into two multifamily residential lots located at the northwest corner of McKee Road and Stein Road. And finally, Project 5F is a planned development review 17-0263, known as Juliana's Garden, proposal to add floor plans and elevations for single-family homes to planned unit development 05-0502, commonly known as Juliana's Garden, generally located on the east side of City Hills Drive and south of Garden Park Drive. This concludes my reading of this evening's projects.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. At this time, I will open all Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony, just a request that it gets moved into the public hearing portion of the evening. So if anyone would like to move an item for discussion, now's the time to come up and request.
Eduardo Morales, and I'd like to move the parcel map 10606 for discussion, please.
Item 5D, yes, we'll move that, Item 5D.
Excuse me?
Item 5D, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shane Brooks, and I'd like to request open for discussion on, I think it's 5A, for tract map 6148.
Any other member of the audience wish to move an item off the consent calendar? Seeing no other community members, is there anyone from the commission wishing to remove a Consent Calendar Public Hearing Item? Seeing no one, at this time, the public hearing on all Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items not removed is now closed. So we will be... May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on Consent Calendar Items 5B, 5C, 5E, and 5F, including all staff's memo...
I'll make that motion. Thank you for phrasing it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Redneck. And Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
We are now moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting. It is now time to hear the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items removed from that portion of the agenda. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition of the project will be able to speak after those in favor have spoken. Each side will then be given a five-minute total-time rebuttal to provide comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing items on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of other participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments in a concise and clear way. Mr. Coyle, will you please provide your staff report on Item 5A?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6148. As I mentioned, it's located on the east side of the Alfred Harrell Highway, south of the Kern River Golf Course. Again, it's a project for 361 single-family residential lots, one park lot, and three open-space lots on 219 acres. On June 5th, 2003, the Planning Commission approved vesting tentative tract map 6148. However, that action was appealed to the City Council. On November 5th, 2003, the City Council approved the tentative tract map. On November 2nd, 2006, your Planning Commission approved a three-year extension. Due to the economic downturn and the recession, the California State Legislature approved a series of five different automatic extensions. The cumulative result of the automatic extensions of time approved by the state is that this tentative map expires on November 4th, 2018. The request before the Planning Commission tonight is for a second, three-year extension of time to extend the approval to November 4, 2021. The applicant has stated that they need additional time to facilitate the entitlement work. Staff has provided to the commission correspondence received from area residents, and staff would recommend approval of this project. That concludes our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
I'm Kathy Williams. I'm with QK. Our address is 5080 California Avenue, Suite 220, Bakersfield. We are the engineer for the project. I'm here representing the client. I'm just happy to answer any questions that anybody would have. So we're obviously in support of the project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one, we will move on to opposition. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Shane Brooks. I live in Cattle King Estates, which is adjacent to the 5A tract. And we had, a lot of the people in the community had come to us and requested at least questions and information on what the impact would be in regard to, you know, if it's built on the hillside facing the people that live, that are already living there. It's kind of a valley is what it is, and there's a natural creek that goes through. They're obviously dried up at certain times of the year, but definitely goes through there. And so we were trying to figure out if there was any California Environmental Quality Act that had been conducted on this piece of property to see what it would, you know, entitle, or entail, I should say. So that was one of the concerns. And the other one is because it's a natural valley, anything that's built on the side of the hillside facing Cattle King Estates is going to be lights, noise. I mean, you can hear a cow moo from half a mile away because of the nature of the way the landscaping is. So again, we don't, I don't know specifically if there's plans on building right there, if it's in three years or 10 years. I don't know, we don't know that, but it's certainly a concern that a lot of the people within Cattle King Estates have been voicing concerns about. So those were the two main things was, was there a California Environmental Quality Act study done on that, on this particular tract? That's pretty much it.
We will now move on to, before we move on to the rebuttal period...
Do you see if there's anyone else in opposition?
Yes, that's... Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition of Item 5A? Thank you, Mr. Iger. Seeing no one, before we get into rebuttal, now is the time for commissioners to ask for comments, or ask questions of the public or of staff. Again, this is not time for us to express our opinions, just ask questions. Commissioner Wade.
Staff, was there a SEQA study done on this development? Yes, sir. There was environmental work done before the project was approved back in 2003. Nothing about the project that we're discussing tonight has changed from 2003. They're just asking for additional time to complete the project.
I actually have a question for the project engineer, since we have you tonight. If you could answer... I know the map has been provided as part of the application, but the project's interface with the seasonal creek that was mentioned by the neighbor?
As far as the plans go, the initial, there is no initial impact with that, so we should be fine. We should be clear of that stream, so.
Yeah, I always want, can you be a little, can you go a little more detail? There's a dry creek bed there now. What's the plan for it?
I mean, the initial, I don't have the plans in front of me. The initial lot layout, I believe, is to obviously be protected, keep away the houses and the layout. I'm trying to see where it was at. The layout of the lots to avoid it, not to impact it at all. I mean, I don't have the plans, and I'm working with them right now to see about potentially revising some of the layouts, but we definitely would keep that in mind to not impact that.
And I guess, so then, if there's no specific map, then maybe the planning, or planning staff, is there any, I mean, this is part of the hillside development zone, I assume, is there any sort of offset or any sort of minimum standard that will be applied to... I guess my question generally is if we're approving a tract map, we should be able to see the tract map and how it interfaces with the creek, so I'm curious.
Good evening. This is Jenny in the Planning Department.
Yes.
There are slides that include the tract map itself. I'm not sure where exactly the dry creek bed is. I would say that the grading of the property would need to be in conformance with our standards, and that if that dry creek bed is, or the creek bed is not to be, not to remain, then the diversion would be consistent with our grading plan standards, whether it be piped or flowed down into our sewer system.
Jenny, refresh my memory on water on a subdivision or a piece of property, the city requires that all that water be mitigated and contained.
Commissioner Lomas, that's correct. That's part of our standard. It is to be flowed into a sump or retention basin, and that's part of the grading plan approval process that the Public Works Department and the Building Department reviews.
Are there any other commissioner questions? Seeing no one, we will move on to a rebuttal period, which, Madam Clerk, if you could put on the clock, is a five-minute period for each side, beginning with those in support of the project. So please be prepared to come to the podium. Please note that it's a five-minute total time for all speakers, so please be succinct without repeating remarks of previous speakers to ensure that everyone who wishes to provide rebuttal comments has a chance to do so. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support as a rebuttal to the opposition? Seeing no one, I will move on to a rebuttal period for those in opposition. If you wish to... Seeing no rebuttal, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to commission for comment and action. All right. Commissioner Wade?
This was previously approved. It went to the City Council, so it had a lot of scrutiny when it first passed. There was a SEQA analysis at the time. Nothing has changed. There are certain minimum standards that must be reached for this project to go forward that are overseen by the Planning Department. Nothing's changed. This is, I think that we just need to make a decision from a planning standpoint whether we want growth in this area, not whether the plan was solid when it was previously approved. That's it.
Commissioner Lewis?
For the gentlemen, thank you for coming. This was approved a long, long time ago as far as its land use, meaning that houses, it was given permission a long, long time ago that houses would go there. So that is this property owner's property right to develop into houses, as you have property rights that you enjoy with your home. So it's along the same right, along the same lines is that, once you have those rights, they can't be removed. So it isn't in our ability to make changes to his property rights. But in hearing you, you're having some pretty general questions on the procedure and what's going on on this piece of property. And I would invite you to give your information to staff, and it describes in better detail within our staff report on what has been done and what hoops have been gone through to ensure that this will be a good amenity and neighbor to you. It'll be developed properly in a safe manner with all SEQA criteria being addressed. So again, I would invite you to go to staff, and they can better help you understand what's going on in your neighborhood.
Are there any other commissioner comments? All right. Okay. Can I get a motion on Item 5A?
Motion to adopt resolution recommend findings approving to extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6148 incorporating the Planning Director's memo dated October 3, 2018.
Great job. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Wade. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Redneck. And Commissioner Wade.
We will now move on to Item 5E, or my apologies, Item 5D. Mr. Coyle, would you please provide staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Extension of time for vesting tentative parcel map 10606. As I mentioned earlier, it's located on Woodmere Drive between Ash and Stein Roads. The project entails 112 parcels and one drill site lot on 51.3 acres, which are zoned M1 and M2. This tentative parcel map was originally approved on September 4th, 2003 by your commission. On August 17, 2006, your commission granted the first three-year extension of time. Again, due to various state-approved automatic extensions of time, the new expiration date is September 3, 2018. Tonight's request is the second extension of time request for an additional three years, and the applicant has made this request for additional time in order to record the map. Phase 1 of the project consists of 68 lots and one designated remainder lot, and this was recorded on November 30, 2011. Development for industrial use has already occurred within the recorded phase. We have received correspondence from an area resident, and it is included in your staff report package. And with that, staff recommends approval extending the time for vesting tentative parcel map 10606. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hi, Ruben Miranowski, 5400 Woodmere Drive. And we did this project so far on phase 1, and we want to conclude on phase 2 and record the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one, I will now invite anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the project. If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hello, my name is Eduardo Morales, and I actually have three questions, concerns maybe. The first one is the location of the drill site. Where is it going to be at? Is it going to be where the other two wells are there already? And secondly, what are we going to be doing? Because five, four years ago, the drill, a well there, for two months, they were drilling, and there was some noise pollution. Now, my question is, what are they planning to do to mitigate or minimize the noise pollution that takes place 24 hours a day? And last time was for almost two months. That's one of the questions. The second question is, they're asking for an exemption to the SEQA. Is that for the project, or that's for the extension? That's my next question, because the letter says for the project. That's my next question, because the letter says for the project. So that's my second question. My third question is, my house, my home is right next to the wall. So there's two lots that haven't been really developed, built anything on them, and my question is, am I going to know when they're going to start building something behind me? Because I'm really concerned about what is it going to be, the noise pollution that may be generated every day. And so like I said, it's only a wall between the other side and the residential side. So I'm really concerned about that. And those are the only questions that I have at this moment, and I'm not sure how all those questions are going to be answered, but I guess somebody will let me know. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the project?
My name is Jonna Donovan, and I live on Sugar Pine Drive behind, in the residential area where this proposed industrial development is supposed to happen, and they're requesting an extension on that. I'm really a bit concerned about this because we've had issues previously several years ago about the drilling site before, and if he's adding on another drill site, that's going to impact the environmental issues around our neighborhood. And I walk, and I've seen kit boxes in that area, so, and also the quality of family life in that industrial does impact us, and we've been in that area, and it just concerned us, and we've had previous issues from Papa, the company that's wanting to develop this back area. We've had issues from other lot development back there, but I'm not going to bring that up because that doesn't pertain this, but I definitely feel that they should not be exempt from the California Quality Environmental Act. That needs to be addressed because it does impact our home environment, and it does impact the value of our home back there, too. And I know all of you are homeowners, and you have family, and you have children, and that would be an issue for you, too. So please consider that, too.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition? If not, does any Commissioner have questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not a time to give your opinion, only to ask questions of staff and the public. I think, before we move into rebuttals, if I could ask a few questions of staff, I think many of the items, some questions about the noise pollution and the mitigating measures, if you could explain that process.
I don't have any reports in front of me that talk about noise mitigation, but I will certainly look into that and get back to the commission. I thought I heard a statement about an additional drill site going in. There's only one drill site on the property, and it's sort of centrally located in the site plan that you can see in front of you. And the other comment that was made about exemption from SEQA, again, similar to the project that you just heard previously, the SEQA work was done when the project was initially approved back in 2003. Again, nothing is being proposed that would change anything on this project. Again, they're simply asking for an extension of time.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Those are my questions. Any other Commissioner questions? Not? I will open it up to a rebuttal. If anyone wishes to speak again in favor, please come forward. Please note, this is a five-minute period, so please be succinct, try not to repeat yourself, and give everyone a chance to speak. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you start the clock? Oh, could you bring your mic up? I'm sorry. For our large YouTube following, we want to make sure we can hear you.
It's located, it's on north side of Woodmere. So phase one, it's practically going east-west, and it's, some of the lots are on north of the Woodmere, and then phase two is on north. And the drill site is on the middle. And yes, there was a drilling once done by Crimson. They drilled one drill, and so that's the only one that I guess they're going to drill. And the drill site, it's two and a half acres. And so right now, it's the only thing I just wanted to complete, what is, need to be done, underground utilities, and do the paving and sidewalk, and it should be done, ready to record the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have three minutes remaining. If anyone else wishes to speak in favor of the project? Seeing no one, we will close the rebuttal period for those in support. Is there anyone speaking in opposition that would like to provide rebuttal comments? Anything that's been said tonight? Again, this is a five-minute period, and please be succinct, and thank you.
I just like to find out how our concerns are going to be addressed. Is there any plan to tell us what's going to be behind our homes in the future? And who's going to provide that information to us? That's my question. And also, when are we expected to get this information? So, I'm not sure. Can you tell me if it's going to be in the future, or somebody is going to provide that information?
We can. Yeah, we can, we'll discuss after. This is just a period to take comments, so.
Okay, like I mentioned, there are two lots behind our home, and I'm concerned about what is going to be built there. That's what I'm trying to find out.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Shelley Crane, and I have a giant building directly behind my house. I was never notified, and I've lived there for eight years, so I don't know why I wasn't notified. So my concern with the SEQA, because I know that SEQA also, part of that is that they have to notify the people that live around it, and so I'm concerned if they become exempt from SEQA, will they no longer have to notify us when something is built? And then who, if they become exempt from that, will there, will someone else still be following through with making sure that the environment, I'm trying to figure out what to say, just that, like, will there still be environmental impact reports? And with the buildings and stuff, this might not apply. Feel free to just tell me, no. But there's like a building 85 feet from my house, and I thought they were supposed to be 100 feet since it's industrial property. So that's my concerns.
Thank you. There are three minutes remaining. If anyone else wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing no one else, we will close the rebuttal comments and move on to Commissioner comments and action. Barbara?
All right, they're giving this to me again. This is very similar as the one we had before us with the gentleman that's sitting behind you. Back, and you guys have the dates in front, when they were awarded their?
2006.
2006. This property was zoned for housing, and that is what, that private property right that I spoke about earlier. They were given permission to have this. You're industrial lots? I'm so sorry. Thank you. I said the wrong thing. They were given this, yeah, thank you for the correction. They were given permission to have this industrial piece of property. And as you have, that is their right now. We can't change it. So what do you do with that? Because we obviously have to all coexist. The city of Bakersfield has very strict standards that must be followed, and right now, that's your assurance, is that the city of Bakersfield has the means and the rules to make sure that this is developed in an orderly, safe fashion. We can't change its use. It will be what it will be. Also, the same as the other gentleman, I would invite you to talk to staff and to get a better sense of how this goes. We obviously can't go through all the questions and answers and alleviate all your concerns and questions, because you're really not quite sure what your questions are. All we can tell, we know, we have assurances that the city of Bakersfield have the proper rules in place. I would also invite the developer to have a conversation. You have neighbors, and it would be really good if you took their name and number and had a conversation with them, too, and then you'll get the whole story. You can have your insurances from the city of Bakersfield that we'll be watching, and have a better sense of when and timing, and that, you're going to get a better sense from the developer himself. So could I ask a question, sir? Thank you. Are you open to communicating with the neighbors? Wonderful. So if, I'll invite them to come see you and get your name and number, and?
Commissioner Lomas? I appreciate your comments. Let me close the public.
You want to close the public hearing?
That's what Richard said. I thought I did, but Commissioner Lomas is, all right, we will now close the public hearing. And now Commissioner Lomas may continue. Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, all of that, just move it past closing. Same thing applies. So you're open to that, sir? Thank you. So if you guys can talk, and also to leave your name and numbers with the staff.
Sure.
And whenever, anyway, we'll all get on that same page. This will be a journey for you. Thank you, sir, that's all I really wanted. This will be a journey. I wanted to say one more thing to the neighbors, if you don't mind. For the last, what year is this? 2018. For 28 years, I've lived next to a drill island. Yeah. But it's not the same when, once it's contained within a subdivision, they have to follow a whole bunch of more rules. So, I mean, within the city of Bakersfield, it has to be fenced, there's noise ordinances, there's all kinds of stuff that will help protect you. Now, we can't get around that you're next to industrial property. There's going to be noise. There just is. And that's going to be part of your future. But there are mitigating measures that'll make sure it's kept to a minimum. Okay? Thanks.
Commissioner Bell?
And I'm going to add on a little bit for you all. To the extent that residential is next to commercial development, especially industrial development, I would encourage you, if you want a nice little field trip, all three of you to go down, go to the Planning Department and ask them for things that, the regulations that you may be concerned about. There are certain very clear pages in our code that tell us what separations are, that tell us what walls are, landscaping are, and I can assure you that the developer will know what they are. They won't be allowed to permit, they won't be allowed to do certain things until all that is met. These gentlemen that are up on the dais are very astute and will do a good job to make sure that your developer is held in check, and that everything that is available to them to restrict problems between unlike neighbors will be done. So I just want to encourage you that, not a lot that we can do to change zoning or do anything to mitigate that, but there are good and clear, concise development standards that he'll have to meet, or any developer will have to meet, that are designed to help protect you all as well. So, nice little field trip. If not, call in, talk to some of the leadership at the Planning Department, I'm sure they can help you out.
Okay. Seeing no other Commissioner comments, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve a general item 5D, extension of time for vesting tentative parcel map 10606, except staff recommendations for extension of time.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. May I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Wade. Thank you. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kader.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Redneck, and Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
That concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda. Now moving on to communications.
Just one brief announcement for the commission this evening, and that is, we will have an October 18 Planning Commission meeting here at 5:30.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Seeing no other communications, we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioners who wish to make a comment? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:17. Thank you for attending.